Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is James Thrash and I'm the designated hearing officer for the proceedings. And I'd like to just take a moment and ask everybody to make sure they silence their cellphone before we get started. And the role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of the proceedings is made and developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permits. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing for the following proposed permit actions for Alabama Power Company's William C. Gorgas Electric Generating Plant Ash Pond, Gypsum Pond, Bottom Ash Landfield, and CCR Gypsum Landfield located near 460 Gorgas Road in Parrish, Alabama. The proposed initial issuance of a coal combustion residual permit number 64-12 to close the Plant Gorgas Ash Pond, Gypsum Pond, and Bottom Ash Landfield to operate the Plant Gorgas CCR and Gypsum Landfield. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department will consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On November the 10th, 2021, notice of the date, time, and place and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website and published in the Birmingham News. In addition, the department sent notices of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations that had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record for these Copies of the public notice, permit application, preliminary determinations, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as on the state, the department's website. The hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit written statements may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. Also, we would like to remind everyone that their comments are limited to seven minutes and we'll have a timer running for each speaker. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions and must base the determination only on whether the permit application has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to aid them by the state legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department personnel and staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit actions. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer here tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that the written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit actions and develop responses to comments for the proposed permits. The hearing record, final determinations, and responses to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. The hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded by video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let's move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearances of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, representatives of the department's land division, then a representative of Alabama Power Company if they're here, then any elected officials or their representatives who have pre-registered to speak. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered during the preregistration offered online or by phone, and then those that registered onsite here tonight. I now recognize Mr. Jared Kelly with the Alabama Department of Environmental Management's Land Division to make his statement.
My name is Jared Kelly and on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, we thank you for your participation in the permitting process for the William C. Gorgas Electric Generating Plant Permit 64-12. Alabama Power Company has submitted to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management an application for the initial issuance of a coal combustion residuals CCR permit to close for the Plant Gorgas Ash Pond, Gypsum Pond, and Bottom Ash Landfield, and CCR permit to operate for that Plant Gorgas CCR and Gypsum Landfield at the William C. Gorgas Electric Generating Plant. The Plant Gorgas Ash Pond is a CCR surface impoundment located in Sections 20, 21, 28, and 29, ten ship 16 south, range 6 west, in Walker County, Alabama, consisting of approximately 1,467.01 acres, with a disposal area that consists of approximately 423.32 acres. The Plant Gorgas Gypsum Pond is a CCR surface impoundment located in Section 13, ten ship 16 south, range 6 west, in Walker County, Alabama, consisting of approximately 57.10 acres, and a disposal area that consists of approximately 18.70 acres. The Plant Gorgas Bottom Ash Landfield is a CCR landfield located in Section 17, ten ship 16 south, range 6 west, in Walker County, Alabama, consisting of approximately 287.06 acres, with a disposal area that consists of approximately 44.92 acres. Plant Gorgas CCR and Gypsum Landfield is a CCR landfield located in Section 13, ten ship 16 south, range 6 west, in Walker County, Alabama, consisting of approximately 287.06 acres, with a disposal area that consists of approximately 44.04 acres. The waste stream for the Plant Gorgas CCR and Gypsum Landfield would be CCR including fly ash, bottom ash, boiler slag, and flue gas desulfization materials generated from burning coal for the purpose of generating electricity. The service area for the Plant Gorgas CCR and Gypsum Landfield would be Alabama Power Company. The maximum average daily volume of waste disposed at the Plant Gorgas CCR and Gypsum Landfield would be 2,000 cubic yards a day. The proposed permit would require the permit to maintain the CCR in accordance with the conditions of the proposed permit, AIDM Admin Code 335-13-15, Standards for Disposal of Coal Combustion Residuals in Landfills and Surface Impoundments, and the approved permit application. Groundwater monitoring and corrective action requirements in the proposed permit establish a groundwater monitoring system of Wales that provides an accurate representation of the groundwater quality underlying the units and a groundwater monitoring plan to establish appropriate sampling and analysis of the system to detect the presence of CCR constituents. For units where CCR constituents exceed acceptable levels, the proposed permit establishes corrective action requirements to remediate contamination caused by the units. Closure criteria in the proposed permit establish requirements for all units to close in accordance with specified standards and timeframes. Post closure criteria in the proposed permit require each unit be maintained for a period of time after closure, including maintaining groundwater monitoring and corrective action to ensure a long-term safety of units that are closing. Operating criteria in the proposed permit establish requirements for the disposal of CCR in all units approved to accept waste, including all labbed waste streams and daily volumes permitted to be disposed of, plants control fugitive dust runoff, run on, and inspection requirements. The permit must comply with all conditions of the proposed permit, except to extent and for the duration such non-compliance is authorized by a variance granted by AIDM. The first variance request, the final grade of the cover system to be less than 5% and greater than 25% for the Plant Gorgas Ash Pond, Bottom Ash Landfield, and CCR and Gypsum Landfield. The second variance request using erosion control measures as specified in the permit application, other than horizontal terraces for the Plant Gorgas Ash Pond. Previously approved variances to exclude boron as an appendix for assessment monitoring constituents and from 335-13-15.06, print 6, print H, to, to the extent that provisions precludes the use of federal groundwater protection standards, DWPS, of six micrograms per liter of cobalt, 15 micrograms per liter of lead, 40 micrograms per liter lithium, and 100 micrograms per liter of molybdenum are no longer necessary because the department amended AIDM Administration Code 335-13-15 on February 15, 2021 to remove boron as an appendix for constituent and establish DWPS for cobalt at six micrograms per liter, lead at 15 micrograms per liter, lithium at 40 micrograms per liter, and molybdenum at 100 micrograms per liter in order to maintain consistency with the federal regulations. Therefore, these variances have not been included in the draft permit. Based on our review of the initial permit application, the department has made a preliminary determination that proposed facility would be in compliance with the applicable state and federal solid waste disposal requirements and thus protective of public health and the environment. The proposed permit includes the following conditions. Upon renewal, the permit would be valid for a 10-year period. The permit would conduct groundwater monitoring semi-annually. The permit would implement and maintain a corrective action program. The permit would maintain the integrity of the final cover system throughout the life of the permit and post closure period. The permit would at all times properly maintain the facility and all systems in accordance with the application and the permit. The permit would obtain the approval of AIDM for any change or modification to the facility or system which might otherwise result in non-compliance with the permit or AIDM's administrative code. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity to receive public comment regarding the application and proposed permit. The department welcomes your input to this process and will consider all technical comments prior to making final decision concerning the issuance of this permit and will develop a response to comments which will become part of the public record and be posted to the department's e-file system. Thank you again for participating in the hearing.
Okay, it's my understanding that we don't have a representative of Alabama Power Company present. Do we have any elected officials present? Okay, if not, I guess we will now proceed to take comments from members of the public. And as indicated in the public notice for this hearing, oral testimony for each registered speaker is limited to seven minutes. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in seven minutes, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize the comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing either tonight at the public hearing or you can submit it directly to the department. Okay, with that being said, we want to recognize our first registered speaker who is Seth Hamlet. Please, please come on up Seth, state your full name, the organization that you're speaking on behalf of, and speak clearly so the court reporter can take down your comments.
Thank you very much and I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Seth Hammett. I come tonight in my capacity as chairman of the Energy Institute of Alabama. We have six entities that are members of this institute, all of whom are involved in either the transmission, the generation, or the distribution of electricity. We have five of these organizations that are involved in parts of this process. Tennessee Valley Authority of Power Site Energy, which generates and transmits electricity. We have three then distribution organizations, and finally Alabama Power Company that does all three, generates, transmits, and distributes. I'm here tonight to ask you to look favorably upon the permit request from Alabama Power Company to cap the coal ash in place. I have five points and I'll make those very briefly. First, Alabama Power's facilities have received the highest rating available from the EPA following an inspection and historically have not had any type of structural failure of any of its company's ash ponds. Number two, a specially engineered drainage and collection system will be installed for additional long-term protection. Point number three, the company is installing a specially engineered barrier over the material to keep it safely in place. Number four, stormwater systems will be added to manage rainwater runoff. And finally, sealing the ash in place avoids potential safety risks that can arise from trucking large volumes of coal ash through Alabama communities for decades to come. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next registered speaker we have is Blake Hardwich. It'll take us just a few minutes between the speakers because we change out the mic sock and do some other hygiene measures of COVID protocol. Okay, if you would, tell us your full name and you're speaking on behalf of any other organization or group and speak clearly and at least be reminded of the seven minute clock over to your left.
Yes, sir. My name is Blake Hardwick. I'm here tonight serving in the capacity as Executive Director of the Energy Institute of Alabama. I won't go through who our members are. I think you just heard from our chairman Seth Hammett. But I'm here tonight to come and express my support for a closure in place from the plan that Alabama Power has submitted. A few things I want to mention is Alabama Power is looking at closing the coal ash pond safely and permanently. They're doing several things which include treating and removing all water from the pond. Material will be excavated and moved further away from waterways, creating a buffer in some areas nearly a half mile wide. The facility size will be reduced by 130 acres or by nearly a third. Alabama Power is applying advanced engineering to construct a reinforced dike system between the facility and the river as part of the plant's increased robust flood protection measures. A specially engineered drainage and collection system will be installed for additional long-term protection. The company is installing a specially engineered barrier over the material to keep it safely in place. Stormwater systems will be added to manage rainwater runoff. And Alabama Power will monitor groundwater around this facility for at least 30 years to ensure ongoing protection of water quality. In March, the Energy Institute of Alabama released several independent studies where we had commissioned through Pila Geo-Environmental Independent Studies on coal ash sites located throughout the state of Alabama. And I did want to make a few comments regarding that study. Pila Geo-Environmental is out of Tuscaloosa, but they're not just known in the state and the United States, but they're world renowned for their studies. The lady that led this study is named Lois George. Her title is Vice President of Environment and Ecology at Pila Geo-Environmental. She has 40 years' experience with specialization in hydrogeological investigations spanning throughout the United States. As you know, the federal and state rules allow for in-place closure for CCR impoundments by meeting certain requirements and performance standards as summarized. To control, minimize, or eliminate infiltration of liquids to and releases of CCR and contaminated runoff. Remove free liquids of CCR and stabilize. Install final cover system meeting design criteria. Maintain integrity and effectiveness for the final cover system. Monitor groundwater quality conditions. As I mentioned, Alabama Power will be doing this for at least 30 years. The independent study by Pila Geo-Environmental concluded that the closure in place will essentially establish horizontal and vertical containment of the dewatered CCR with the presence of the underlying low permeability strata by construction of a new dam at the toe of the consolidated CCR and installation of the multi-layered composite cover system. The multi-component closure of plan of Plant Gorgas Ash Pond is comprehensive and robust and includes both physical and hydraulic engineered technologies to create source containment and redundant safety features and flood protection that have been designed to rigorously comply with and achieve the closure in place regulatory requirement.
Thank you. Next we have Katie Fagan. Oh, I'm sorry, Mitch Mays. Yeah, no, come on. We'll give this gentleman just a second to get set up before we continue.
I don't have a face for TV though.
Okay, if you would, tell us your name and any group or organization you might be speaking on behalf of and speak loudly and clearly so we can make a good record.
Yes, sir, I will. My name is Mitch Mays. I'm the administrator for the Tennessee Tom Bigby Waterway Development Authority and I'm also the president of the Tennessee Tom Bigby Waterway Council. Do you want me to lay the phone off? Do you want me to wait until the phone?
Just talk over the phone, I think that'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to make a few remarks concerning the Alabama Power plan to close and cap in place the ash ponds at the former Gorgas steam plant. My organization is a four-state compact between the states of Alabama, Kentucky, Mississippi, and Tennessee. I also live in Carbon Hill, which is here in Walker County. I've reviewed some of the plans that Alabama Power has to contain the ash ponds located at the Gorgas steam plant. I'm confident that their plan will meet and exceed all legal and regulatory requirements. This method is EPA approved and I've seen firsthand how the US government and Department of Defense has used the very same process to cap hazardous materials and soils. And if you want an example of this, I would encourage you to visit the former Alabama Army ammunition plant which borders the Coussa River located in Childersburg, which is in Talladega County, to see how the federal government used the same process to cap materials much more hazardous than coal ash. The cap in place process is common and has been EPA approved for years. And in this case, Alabama Power has advanced the engineering and technology to meet these This plant is safe and has been evaluated and reviewed for years and it is the safest choice. The EPA has given Alabama Power its highest rating after inspections and to date Alabama Power has not had any structural failures at their ash ponds. With their engineered drainage and collection systems, long-term protection will be ensured. Furthermore, Alabama Power is installing a specially engineered barrier over the material to keep the ash ponds in place. With the barrier and drainage systems in place, stormwater runoff will be effectively controlled. Also, as a resident of Walker County and knowing Carbon Hill purchases its water from the Jasper Water Board, which draws its water from the Warrior River, I would not want anything that would endanger our drinking water. This plan does not endanger our drinking water and in fact it secures it because the buffers will be increased between the ash ponds and the river. Also, if this material is hazardous, why would anyone want to truck, rail, or barge it to another location, increasing the risk to communities this material would pass through? Please keep the ash ponds in place, secure it using current engineering and technology, and continue to monitor it and keep everyone safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Please state your full name and any group or organization you might be associated with and keep an eye on the clock over to your left.
I will do that. Good evening. My name is Eva Dillard. I'm the staff attorney with Black Warrior Riverkeeper. We protect and restore the Black Warrior River and its tributaries. Plant Gorgas is sited on the Mulberry Fork of the Black Warrior River. Just in sitting here tonight, I have heard several comments in favor of the closure plan. However, those comments ignore the elephant in the room, which is after Alabama Power caps the coal ash in place, it will still be sitting in groundwater. And for that reason, we will ask AIDM not to approve the permit as written. AIDM must base any determination as to whether, as whether to grant the closure permit on whether the permit applicant has satisfied the requirements of applicable law and regulations. As proposed by Alabama Power, the Plant Gorgas closure plan to cap the ash in place will not control, minimize, or eliminate post closure infiltration of liquids into the coal ash waste or releases of coal combustion residuals, leachate, or contaminated runoff to the ground or surface waters as required by applicable regulation 40 CFR Section 257.102D. It is undisputed that Plant Gorgas's ash lies in groundwater and in live stream drainages. It's built on intermittent and perennial streams. After capping in place, the data shows that not all of the consolidated dried ash will be above the groundwater levels. The lower levels of ash will continue to sit in groundwater and stream drainages post closure. Groundwater will continue to migrate in and out of the ash and contaminants will continue to be transported into the groundwater and to the hydrologically connected Mulberry Fork. Because the current closure plan will leave ash in an unlined impoundment submerged in groundwater within a porous media, it cannot, it cannot meet the applicable standards of the 2015 coal ash rule. For this reason alone, AIDM must deny the closure permit for cap in place. A reason why AIDM should not issue the closure permit is A reason why ADEM should not issue the closure permit as drafted is because the proposed plan won't work. Alabama Power's approach is to cap in place and allow monitored natural attenuation to address the significant groundwater contamination that exists. In other words, don't remove and safely dispose of the ash, let's cover it and hope the problem will go away. But it won't. The monitored natural attenuation that Alabama Power proposes to cap in place does not work, does not work for coal ash that sits in water and continually discharges into ground and surface waters. As ADEM acknowledged in November 2019 correspondence to Alabama Power, that fact is especially true for dangerous inorganics like lithium and arsenic and molybdenum, which is present in the coal ash at Plant Gorgas. Moreover, monitored natural attenuation requires that an aquifer has sufficient capacity to, for the attenuation to take place. Alabama Power and its plan has failed to demonstrate how monitored natural attenuation will work on the organics. They have failed to demonstrate whether the aquifer even has sufficient capacity for the attenuation to take place. In other words, and they've done no site-specific work to understand whether, you know, the monitored natural attenuation would take place. In other words, they're asking for ADEM's blessing on a plan that's not been fully outlined, explored, or vetted. And in these circumstances, ADEM cannot issue the closure plan for cap in place. I want to close by talking a little bit about what other states in the southeast are doing. And we ask ADEM to join the growing majority of states in the southeast who are requiring excavation. These states are moving to excavate coal ash which rests in groundwater or is connected hydrologically to surface waters like the coal ash here. Utilities in South Carolina, North Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and Virginia are all requiring excavation in these circumstances. States like South Carolina are showing that excavation can safely and economically be performed in a time period that is comparable to cap in place. And I heard some comments earlier about the safety of transporting coal ash. Somehow, it's safe enough to bury in live stream drainages, but it's not safe enough to transport. I think South Carolina has demonstrated that that can be done and there were no catastrophic accidents or other issues with that. Recycling is also a very feasible and cost-effective approach that's working in other states and it could work in Alabama too. Cap in place will not further the mission of ADEM to provide for a safe, healthful, and productive environment in Alabama. To the contrary, it will allow the continued proliferation of toxins like arsenic, lithium, and molybdenum in the environment. Peer-reviewed studies show that families living near coal ash storage sites have far higher incidences of cancer and other diseases. ADEM, please do the right thing. Establish excavation and either recycling or removal to a lined landfill as the appropriate way to treat the ash, not just at Plant Gorgas, but at all the, all the locations in the state where coal ash sits in groundwater or is in contact with hydrologically connected surface water. That's the only viable approach to meet the requirements of the 2015 closure plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Katie, please tell us your full name and if you're associated with any group or organization and you might probably speak loud if you're going to wear your mask. You can take it off if you would like. All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Fagan and I'm here as the outreach coordinator for Black Warrior Riverkeeper and as a resident of the Black Warrior Riverkeeper watershed. Thank you so much for the opportunity to have public comments tonight. We really appreciate it. As you'll know, approximately 25 million cubic yards of coal ash have been stored in just the 420-acre unlined impoundment known as Rattlesnake Lake. And according to Alabama Power's own sampling, their coal ash storage facilities at Plant Gorgas, including Rattlesnake Lake, are currently contaminating the groundwater with toxic pollutants exceeding the amounts mandated by the groundwater protection standards. In fact, in 2018, ADEM had a massive fine to Alabama Power for this pollution of all six of their coal ash impoundments, including Plant Gorgas. And unfortunately, the proposed plan by Alabama Power to cap in place fails to adequately address this groundwater contamination because the pond will remain unlined so it can allow the toxins to continue seeping, not only in the groundwater, but also the creeks that flow with it and then into the Mulberry Fork. In addition, the closure plan will not eliminate the threat of a dam failure at the impoundments, which puts all of the waterways and everything downstream at great risk and would have a devastating effect to the community as well. Leaving it in place here especially has a greater long-term threat than even some of their other facilities in the Black Warrior River watershed. As Alabama Power's own assessment resulted in designation of high hazard potential classification for the failure of this dam would mean that there would be severe economic and environmental consequences, but also could result in likely the loss of human life. So this is especially concerning considering Alabama is the only state without a dam safety protocol. So those things in combination put everyone around it at great risk. While neither cap in place or full excavation is free of risk, excavation is clearly the safer option for long-term health of both the environment and the public. Something that has been mentioned before and in other hearings about coal ash is that the community should accept continuing pollution from unlined pits because excavation would be too disruptive due to traffic carrying the coal ash away and also that it's too expensive for the company. This is, in my opinion, extremely limited and short-sighted cost analysis of the available closure options for many reasons. One being it's easier and cheaper to remove coal ash from these impoundments than it is in people's yards and from the rivers in the event of a dam failure, which as I mentioned, Alabama Power assessed as having a high hazard potential. For example, TBA spent over a billion dollars cleaning up the Kingston Coal Ash spill and this involved only 5 million cubic yards of coal ash. If this spill, a similar spill were to occur here, the cost to human life, wildlife, and the economy would be severe. After the 2014 Dan River Coal Ash spill, which involved only 39,000 tons of coal ash, a study found that the combined cost of ecological damage, recreational impacts, effects on human health, and aesthetic value losses totaled just under 300 million for the state and that was just for the first six months of the spill. Because the environmental impact and associated economic costs of a river-based coal ash spill can be long-term, spanning years even decades, this is a very short-term cost analysis of that as well. And in a state where outdoor recreation is a $14 billion industry, this is a pretty big risk to be taking, let alone the risk that it would have towards the environment and the human health around. In addition, we do know that Alabama Power will not have to pay for all this on their own and what they do pay will often be passed down to their ratepayers instead of their executives, but Alabamians will have to pay for this. And the longer it stays here, the more they will have to pay, whether it's us or our grandkids. Secondly, utilities often overestimate the cost of removal while minimizing the cost of cap in place. We saw this in Virginia with Dominion Energy. We know that Alabama Power's estimated cleanup cost for Plant Gorgas is conservative estimate right now, that it's more than likely to increase because of the low to moderate detail recorded in their plan. We also know that if we look at their collective estimate in 2019, they stated that the estimated cost to clean up pond, all their ponds would be 2.8 billion and just a year later, it already increased to 3.3 billion. And this increase is likely to continue as closure plans become more detailed. And then if something were to occur where you'd have to add on the cost of an actual cleanup to the area, or if laws changed like we have seen in other states in the south and they would have to come back through and excavate and move it anyway, this is a cost that's going to go to Alabamians as their rates go up. Until a transparent cost analysis is provided, Alabama Power's word that the removal would quote dramatically increase costs should be taken with a grain of salt, especially considering the financial and environmental risks of cap in place. While neither option is free of risk, it would be logical to implement excavation because it will not only stop the ongoing contamination of groundwater, but it will prevent future economic loss from dam failure and natural disasters. Both Plant Gorgas and Alabama Power have been in this area for a very long time and in our state. They provide jobs, they provide community, they provide electricity to so many Alabamians and now I'm asking them to honor and protect this community and everyone downstream by removing the toxic waste from our waterways. And I'm asking ADEM to honor their responsibility to protect Alabama from environmental ills, especially the environmental ill of coal ash.
Thank you for your comments. Please tell us your full name and if you're speaking on behalf of a group or some organization and you speak loudly and please keep an eye on the clock.
All right.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Holmes and I'm a resident of Birmingham. I'm representing myself as a concerned citizen who uses the Black Warrior River recreationally, especially during the summertime. Thank you very much for having me and allowing me to speak. I'm here to request that the Plant Gorgas coal ash waste be excavated and disposed of properly, not just capped and left to sit at the edge of our drinking water supply, kind of like a landmine. ADEM, please do not approve the permit as written. I understand that addressing this waste is a tremendous undertaking with a significant cost, but I do not feel confident in the outlined permit proposal, even though cap in place is permissible under the 2015 CCR rule. It seems that the cost of capping the waste versus excavating it have been calculated, but not the cost of potential health and environmental damages that will need to be remedied if the coal ash contaminants leach into the water supply. As a taxpayer, I think the cost analysis leaves a lot to be desired in this case. This proposal fails to account for water flowing underground that coal ash will always have some degree of contact with. This proposal also fails to account for the unexpected, which is nature itself. Even a hypothetically perfect coal waste impoundment plan is still vulnerable to natural disasters. Dams can and do fail and we, the residents of Alabama, are entirely unprepared for the consequences financially. Arsenic, which is found in coal ash, is a major concern for human health. Per the World Health Organization, long-term exposure can cause cancer. Ingesting a large enough quantity is fatal. Even if, in a scenario where maybe only wildlife is ingesting these contaminants, we hunt, we fish, we eat that wildlife, and we're eating that pollution too. So I'm asking, why take the risk? Why not take care of this waste in what is more efficient, by removing it entirely? A previous commenter asked, why would we want to transport this waste through areas and put those residents at risk during the transportation process? But that makes me ask, why would we allow it to sit in place at all? Isn't that put us all at risk? And not just humans, but animals that live in the watershed, including many endangered animals that live in the Black Warrior River watershed. I think this requires a more permanent solution. I'd like to conclude by saying that I dread the thought of an unforeseen catastrophe, for example, a destructive storm, or a major flood, or even just the consequences of human error that will result in the spread of dangerous pollutants and cause damage that can't be reversed in my lifetime. I dread the thought of seeing my neighboring communities fall ill. I dread the thought of falling ill myself after ingesting heavy metals. Most of all, I dread the thought of coming down here, maybe 10 years down the line, to stand in front of you and ask, why did this happen? And why are taxpayers going to shoulder the burden of consequence for a plan that simply cannot fill its intended purpose as written? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Please tell us your full name and any group or organization you might be speaking on behalf of.
Good evening. I'm John Bargnier. I'm with a trade association called Manufacturer Alabama out of Montgomery. I serve as the chief operating officer in that association. Manufacturer Alabama is the trade association for all the manufacturing companies across the state and we work firsthand with Alabama Power Company through our environmental working groups that are made up of various industry representatives across the state and we are deeply aware of their commitment to compliance and stewardship. Manufacturer Alabama and our environmental committee supports the approval of the requested permit for the safe closing and sealing of the CCR impoundments at Plant Gorgas. We appreciate that Alabama Power is not only following the rules set forth by regulators and governing bodies, but we also know that they're going above and beyond with a plan that will protect the interest of the public health and the environment. For years, they have been an excellent partner to our industry and they continue to be vital to the state's manufacturing companies, which provide a significant economic impact to this state, as well as ensure high quality of life for the folks here. We appreciate their environmental and conservation efforts and we fully support Alabama Power in this endeavor and encourage ADEM to issue this permit. Thank you for granting me the time to express our support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, please state your full name and then whether you're speaking on behalf of some group or organization and keep an eye on the clock.
Thank you. Yes, sir. My name is Nelson Brooks. I'm with Black Warrior Riverkeeper. I'm the riverkeeper and I'm going to speak for the river. So, back in the 1950s, Alabama Power dammed up a tributary to the Mulberry Fork called Rattlesnake Creek. And they did that by filling in the valley that the creek feeds through to the river with earth and rock. The massive dam that's in place is over 100 feet tall and the lake behind it is about 420 acres in size. The power company's been filling this lake with toxic coal ash waste via slurry pipeline, multiple slurry pipelines under the river for many decades. There's no liner in the bottom of Rattlesnake Lake. There is no separation between this toxic waste and Rattlesnake Creek. Nothing that Alabama Power has planned, not reconsolidating the waste into a smaller footprint or any other measure that they have planned, is going to stop that connection between the toxic coal ash and Rattlesnake Creek. Now, we wouldn't even know what we know today if it weren't for the federal CCR coal ash rule of 2015 because ADEM and the state of Alabama were not requiring Alabama Power to monitor groundwater contamination at this site. So luckily, the feds required that to happen and of course, when that data was released in the spring of 2018, we found out what we had assumed all along, that massive contamination was occurring from toxic heavy metals such as arsenic and others in the groundwater in the area. So, fast forward to now, we're supposedly here submitting comments so that Alabama Power and ADEM can consider what the public's wishes are, but the reality is, is the decision was made over a year ago by Alabama Power to cap its waste in place and ADEM has rubber-stamped that. So, you know, it's kind of a mine that. So, you know, it's kind of a monumental task for us to be here asking you all to change your minds when you're just accepting what Alabama Power has already ordained as the right thing to do. But that's what we're here to do. We're asking you to do the right thing. And that's remove, get Alabama Power to remove this toxic waste from Rattlesnake Creek, because there is no way to keep it from toxifying groundwater, Rattlesnake Creek and the Mulberry Fork for many decades to come, just like has been happening for many decades. This is endangering not only the immediate surrounding area and the communities that are out there, it's also endangering many generations of people who fish and live off the river. Hunt and fish, hunt ducks, catch fish and eat them. I mean, this is a livelihood, it's a way of life, and there's a lot of people doing it downriver as well. We also have two major drinking water intakes downriver, the Warrior River Water Authority, and the city of Bessemer. You know, Bessemer doesn't just provide drinking water to Bessemer, they provide drinking water to Alabaster and many other cities. So, this threat is not a local one, it is a far-reaching one. And I don't think that the plan that you have in place for Alabama Power is a serious plan. It's a plan that's wasteful. It's a plan that's allowing hundreds of millions of ratepayer dollars to be spent on shuffling toxic waste around. And a wet, leaking, unlined footprint, a place that it never should have been put. So, our task is, let's put the brakes on, let's realize that the wheels that are already in motion are a huge mistake, and that if we're serious about doing the right thing, then this mess has to be stopped, and the coal ash needs to be removed and put in a properly lined landfill where this stuff can stop leaching off into surrounding waterways. And so, you know-